I would like to call this council meeting to session at six thirty. For the pleasure of the agents, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could have a moment upstairs for our troops, lower seats please. Thank you. Kristen, has your call been taken?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond, would you please stand up and start the introduction, please?
Dave Richmond with World Professional Services.
Don Bryce, DPW Director.
Kristen Kenyac, City Clerk.
Jerry Link, City Council.
Cam Howe, City Council.
Mike Yildar, City Attorney.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Lee, Mayor of Protown.
Tom M, City Council.
Denise Miller, City Council.
Kristen Simons, City Councilor.
We have no correspondence this evening, so we have to stop this public comment. Individuals wishing to speak will follow the comment cards. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer and it's not a time for debating of comments or questions for council and/or staff to answer or research. Questions will be answered during the meeting if the information is readily available. If answers are not available during the meeting, council or staff will contact the individual within one week or seven business days, or when the information becomes available. The person shall have the right to speak more than once in any particular subject, until all persons wishing to enter that subject have the opportunity to speak. So Lindenwood is an agenda item this evening, so I'm going to save your public comment cards up here for all the Lindenwood items, and it is the first one up on the discussion items. So we will be doing those together. Scott Ward?
Lou.
It's about Lindenwood? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so Monica Larnar.
I'm Monica Larnar. I live at 152 West Boston Road, Linden. So first off, I'm speaking on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary 119 in Linden. We are proud to bring Delphine, a true Rosie the Riveter, to the River Rose on Saturday. Rosie the Riveter represents the women who worked in factories and shipyards during World War II, many of whom produced munitions and war supplies. Delphine was born November twenty-third of nineteen twenty-four. That makes her over a hundred years old. Delphine met her future husband George during high school years. George joined the Army Air Corps in nineteen forty-two. While George was flying missions over Europe, Delphine's uncle secured her a position to work as a classified documents clerk at the Glenn L. Martin Aircraft Company in Baltimore. She dropped out of high school and to live with her uncle in Baltimore, and with his guidance started her work. Some of her work was classified as top secret. George and Delphine were married seventy-two years at the time of his death in two thousand sixteen. Delphine always regretted that she had not completed high school, and in May of two thousand eighteen, a surprise diploma presentation was arranged at Yankee Air Museum Willow Run. She said it was a dream come true. On April tenth, two thousand twenty-four, Delphine, along with a delegation of twenty-seven original Rosies, went to Washington DC, where Congress awarded the Congressional Gold Medal honoring all Rosie Riveters for their service during World War II. So moving on to, I'm still not having access to my two acres to be able to mow it, and now the weeds are this high. So when they put the curb in, they did not put a cutout. And there was a cutout there before this all happened, and I've spoken numerous times about getting my mower onto that land, and I don't know what is so hard about giving me access to my land. So I noticed there was a survey for the Lucy Center. Why is there a survey for that? But there's been numerous things that have come up that have been important, and there were no surveys for. I think we should have more surveys, and I think we should have comment cards, or whatever you want to call them, that can be submitted at City Hall, or something to that effect, instead of just things being the way they operate now.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on knowledge and items? Here in the CPM, you're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent that you did.
I second.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Moving on to discussion items, and the first item is the Lindenwood project update. And before I hand it over to Don, I would ask that anybody tonight, if you want to speak on this agenda item, if you could do a public comment card normally, I don't ask that, but this way Don will have a way to be able to get with everyone, back in touch with everyone. So I would ask that you please fill out one of these. They're located outside the back table, if you're going to speak on Lindenwood. So Lou, Don, do you want me to start here?
Is it necessary? You already an email contact with Don?
That's fine, as long as I know an address.
Okay. All right, do you want to, I'm just going to, I think I'm going to do these and then, okay. All right, so we'll start off with Joyce Ward.
Joyce Ward, three zero nine South Main Street, Linden. In regards to the work that was done on the roads there, we are all assessed a certain amount, and I'm sure that the amount included removal of trees. I would like someone to get back with me on that if you don't have the answer today. Because I have a forty-foot-plus spruce tree taken down that I asked them not to take down. Then they realized that they didn't need to take any of the trees down in the sub. It sounds to me like it was, you hear the saying, "Measure twice, cut once." Well, it should have been verified where they were going to be working before they started to eliminate anybody's trees. Needless to say, I've got a mess that I've got to deal with. They still haven't come back to complete the fill-in where they had all their heavy equipment laying in my yard for weeks I'm in, which has caused the yard to be lumpy, bumpy, whatever you want to call it. It makes it difficult to mow. There's areas I couldn't even mow. There's still areas that have nothing on there, other than it's soil, it's dirt, it's dusty. So the fescue that's growing in there was not planted, it just has blown in. So I would like them to come back and complete the job properly by laying down some soil to even out the areas where it's, where their equipment was laying, where it's rough at. And you can see bare spots from the corner of Main and Maple, all the way to the back of my lot on Maple Street, because I am a corner. So as far as the tree that they removed, you're not going to have someone bring in a forty-foot-plus Colorado blue spruce. And I'm not going to accept a four-foot, five-foot, ten-foot tree. It's just not acceptable. Since it was the decision to remove these trees without proper inspection of whether or not they really needed to, they can reimburse me the cost of having my tree removed, because I know they have to pay for that. So that is, I'm sure there's other people who have their issues with the sub, but they're probably very similar to mine about not finishing the job that has been started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Scott Ward?
Scott Ward, six oh two Soto Lake Court. My property really doesn't buck there, but I do have a small curb cut on South Street, so that's all part of that. Actually, on a positive note, I think the paving turned out great. I walk that subdivision daily, and I think the paving, very good to happen with that. I think we were all disappointed that the late start, I think we all thought it was going to start earlier, and it got delayed, I think we're all disappointed about that. The prior meetings, we talked about new curbs and pavement and water lines and all that. But there's quite a bit of curbs that are still cracked that they didn't replace, and I can't figure out why they didn't replace all of them. I mean, sometimes you replace six or eight of them, and there's one still there. They're not all replaced. And some are still cracked on South, what few still need to crack, so that's one thing. The other, I think everyone, I'd like to hear more about the planning, because my son lives on the end of Lindenwood, and they fixed that, that's beautiful. But around that fire hydrant, all that's still dirt, it's not been seeded, so I'm hoping they come back and. And then some of the dirt over by the dentist's office on the beginning, there's where the curb is, there's maybe three or four foot that needs filling in. Like, they seeded it in the fall, and it all has to be, there's a big lift there, so I'm just hoping that would be taped here. But I think the paving really turned out good. I think everyone's disappointed it got delayed, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Joanne Lund?
Joanne Lund, five sixteen South Street. What he did on, just a little, a lot of frustration. I feel like we've had the wool pulled over our eyes from the city. You guys presented a cost, a list of what was going to be done. I think the city had to switch over the water lines, and in doing that, they had to replace the road, and then push the road cost up off on us. And like he said, South Street, no curbs, no driveway easements, that's what we were charged for. We're not getting a refund. The seeding, the grass, nothing looks as nice as it did when it comes to our yards. And I think there needs to be a resolution. I mean, we're getting charged a really big bill for something that we didn't want to see. And I think that unfortunately, I do as many to the city, pulled the wool over our eyes. They had to change the water lines and put the road cost off on the residents. And I just don't, I just don't think that's right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Hall?
Stacy Hall, three zero two Lindenwood Drive. I can echo the sentiments of the previous speakers. I'm here tonight to share my ongoing frustrations and concerns with the project. Most recently, I learned last month that there's no further plan to modify the residential drive accessways. Basically, the curb was run all the way down the street. I have reached out to Mr. Bryce via email, and I was told that the engineers would check out my drive and follow up. That was two weeks ago, I haven't heard anything. That curb, I brought some pictures of the measurements. I have a four-inch rock from my driveway to the road. That means I'm putting my vehicle into four-wheel drive to get in and out of my driveway. My daughter won't even park in the driveway when she comes home anymore, she parks on the street because she's spotting out when she pulls in and out. There have been modifications made to the entrances at both dental practices on Lindenwood and to the post office, so I'm not sure why the residences have not been modified for their approaches as well. It is not handicap accessible. I have two nieces in motorized wheelchairs who used to be able to zip in and out of my driveway. It is now a tripping hazard. They can't make that bump up and out. I've had guests complain about it. Additionally, when I reached out to Mr. Bryce, I have been at this property for eight years, I've never had any flooding in the property. When I reached out to him, I have experienced flooding in my front yard twice this summer, and now since I reached out to him, I've had flooding two more times, most recently last Thursday night and Saturday. And it's my belief that that new curving system is retaining the water and everything is just kind of draining right into my, I'm kind of low property on that side of the street. I've also got photos from last Thursday night that I can share with you of the flooding in my yard. So I reached out, and I gave him the opportunity to get back with me, but I feel like this is a bigger problem than just me. This is not just a me problem, this is a Lindenwood project problem. I believe that those driveway accesses need to be cut out and re-poured, and you know, at most, if I continue to have flooding on the property, I think we need to address, like, how we fix that. I think the project has definitely changed the drainage in the neighborhood. Of secondary concern, I had some damage to the drive when they took out a slab. I don't expect that the city of Linden re-poured another slab for me, but I do expect that they fill in the holes that were left and that has not been done. So I just want to bring it to everyone's attention and make everyone aware of these things that are happening. It's not just related to one residence, it's the whole neighborhood. And the whole project has really been really terrible. It really has. I've got pictures of the new asphalt. I have pictures of the new asphalt where it's already crumbling and falling apart.
Mayor, can we look at this?
Okay. So I just appreciate any consideration and follow-up. Anything that you can provide for us would be great.
Thank you. Are there any other residents? I would ask that you just grab a public comment card, please. Got it? Perfect. Stephen Schultz?
Stephen Schultz, I'm two one one Lindenwood. We're going to head again. I've been in contact with Don, he's done a decent job responding back. I've sent pictures to Liz about two one one Lindenwood about my curb. I have a camper in my driveway, and my camper now is, I bomb out when I pull up, which I never had beforehand, because our curb's not right. I get you guys' emails, it says engineer inspection, but if Lindenwood wants new contractor, commercial contractor, we do it all, and we'll fix this the right way. Just saying, but. So my curb bombed, so my camper bombed, and now my shelves are breaking down, my camp from getting so hard. So that cost me now three hundred and fifty-five bucks an hour to fix, which I never had it done before, and if I wouldn't have bought them all up. So my question is, is Lindenwood going to either fix our curb, or are they going to buy us all these rubber ramps to put on our curbs? Because we've already paved the jobs, it's not done right. Or who's reversing them? I had to buy a special hitch to move my camper out this winter, because our road was supposed to be paved in September. Then October, we walked all around, the kids were safe, and then it got pushed down, because we did a parking lot that only parks between nine to five, so those residents live here every day. We had a walk call when it was cold and crap yellow, so I came with my camper out until after Thanksgiving, when we finally got our first base down, which the base was too far down, I couldn't get them out, because my jack wouldn't go high enough up. So I had to buy a hitch to move my own camper out on my own driveway, because our road was not done, it was scheduled to be done. And I personally talked to everybody, blamed it all, it's the engineering's job, it's the IC job, it's the contractor's job, it's everybody's fault. I get Don's not physically out there doing it, but he was out there, and someone's paying to check the ICC, who's hiring these guys in my yard. I have a two-inch lift, like, in my yard, so I bombed one, I cut my grass. I wish my yard was pretty as Brad's is, because his yard, he got there pretty good on his side. Lucky you. And then I have roots in my yard still, they're dug down, they need to be dug down, I don't want to dig down, because I'm not mis-ditch, and still not been taken care of. I mean, there's just been numerous things over and over again, and we agreed to a ten-year bill, a fifteen-year bill to pay, and would you guys want your guys to deal with Saturday long, this has been going on since last June, it's been a year now, and our roads are still not done right. And how do you guys go every day and bottom out here? My car gets it every day too, bottom out every day, hits up every day. So now I have to buy a new car, because my driveway's not right. Now I get Don's, had engineers come out and said, it's in Don's requirements, still, let me go to your house, and you mess up your driveway, so you bomb out every day, you would not like it if you won. So I agree, I think that Lindenwood's your charge, ICC, to fix our driveway, bring more asphalt in, I don't know how you guys fix it all, but to fix our driveway, somebody can do this no more. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? We'll do, yep. And then we'll come to the other. Shane Baker?
Shane Baker, Florida Way Maple. I just want to echo what everyone said about the curbs and the lawns. The curbs were not all replaced, which is something to be paid for. You can see maybe every five or six curb slabs, there's still cracked curbs. And everyone's lawn has numerous bald patches in it, crabgrass growing everywhere. My yard is now a third lawn, a third dirt, a third crabgrass, and I can't control it. And it's very frustrating, because I understand that lawns are best planted in spring or fall, but the contractors came out in the spring, put seed on one spot, one bald spot, and left everything else alone. Now my lawn is mostly weeds. I lost a tree that I really enjoyed having, and now that's gone. And I just kind of feel like there hasn't been a lot of answers. I've contacted numerous state officials and gotten no real response, other than it's going to happen. I think a lot of us would probably feel like if we just got like, hey, we're sorry, this will be addressed, your lawns will be addressed in September or October or something like that, people would feel a lot better. But as it stands right now, it looks to us like the contractor came in, did the bare minimum of fixing anything, and then left, and it looks to us like it's done. And it's definitely not done. We all paid fourteen grand for it. That's a lot of money. My house payment went up to three hundred dollars because of it a month, and, you know, it might seem like we're all really upset about it, and there's a lot more people in the neighborhood who aren't here that are upset. But it costs a lot, and we just want it done right, we want our lawns restored to what they were beforehand. So I think that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
What were your names and?
Richard Taylor. Richard Taylor, five oh nine South Street. First off, I want to apologize to everyone, because when we started this project, I came before your council, and I asked, please consider, when you hire the contractors, that you get a decent rate. Well, evidently, you got a really cheap rate, because the work that we've received down there is subpar, it's not good. The curb issue, everyone has, the question I have, and I'd really like an answer to this one. If, when I left in fall, or to go to Florida for the winter, if I came back and all of Lindenwood had brand-new curbs and brand-new approaches. We were told in the initial meeting that I was going to get a new approach, and we were going to get new curbs on South Street also. But when I got back, I found out that, I was told that that wasn't necessarily true, it was only as needed. If it was only as needed, why did every single home on Lindenwood get a new curb, a hundred percent, and a hundred percent new approaches? So there's some discrepancy there that I just don't understand. If somebody could tell me the reasoning behind that. I pretty much believe that the contract got ahead of itself, we got over budget, and then there wasn't enough money left, so we, the fix was to, let's only do it halfway and replace half the curb, or just try not to replace them at all. And this spring, if something hadn't been brought up, the little pieces that we have now wouldn't be there. I was sure myself. The other thing is, I spoke to several of my neighbors about the meeting tonight, told them, come on down, voice your opinion, and the response was, I've been there before, it just aggravates me, it doesn't do any good, nothing gets done. So they have zero confidence in the city as a whole, that if they bring their concerns to you, that something will be done about it. The problem with the landscape, I can tell you what it is. And the contractors are just on South Street again today, screwing it up again. The dirt that they put down to fill in on it is not good dirt, it's full of crabgrass seed. And there was right on, right across the street from me, the water line was replaced, and they had a problem, and they had to come back and dig it up again, because the valve was leaking. They dug it up, the city came in, they put down topsoil over that, they put down seed, and they have beautiful grass in the spot where the city did it. Amazing. Yeah, but every, the rest of their yard is completely covered with crabgrass. I went out there and pulled it all out by hand, because I only have about a ten-foot square spot. But the dirt is where the crabgrass came from, they need to remove the dirt. They went down there today, and they mowed a couple of the yards down as tight as they could, threw a little more of that crabgrass dirt on there, threw some seed on it, and then put some straw over top of it. It's going to come back. It's got to be tore up, or some kind of chemical put down to kill that crabgrass. So you're going to keep hearing this over and over and over, until something is done to correct it properly.
I've got one more, please. Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments about Lindenwood? Anyone else wishing to speak? Don, I'm going to turn it over to you.
There's a few that I can probably answer tonight. As far as the landscaping goes, it's not finished, you're correct. They did do a rough grade and hydro-seeded in the fall last year, just to try to stabilize the soils and stuff, until they were able to come back this spring. We're not happy with the quality of the repairs out there. It's part of the punch list item that they do have to go back and repair. They're in the process of doing that now. We're aware of, and I'll address several of them, the crabgrass issue, where it's taken over a lot of those bare spots out there. We do have specifications in the contract book that will require that those be taken care of, and it goes up to and includes a chemical control for those areas if necessary. So we do plan on holding the contractor to that. Unfortunately, it does take time, and I know we run out of patience, but we do have to allow them this process, so that they can, they have the opportunity to correct it. So that's where we're at in that portion of it. They will be going through, making more landscape repairs, they'll be filling in behind the curbs where it's settled and it's created trip hazards, and they'll be leveling off and reseeding some of the other areas that still need attention. I'll let the engineers address the curbs in a second here, and the design for those curb entrances. The water line, the water line project had nothing to do with the county project. The water mains in there were old and undersized, there were still some six-inch water main in that neighborhood. That was not part of the SAD project. It was included in the overall project, but it wasn't included in the cost to the residents that was paid for by the water fund. But that had to be done, and that's why the timing worked out the way that it did, is we had to go in we had to go in and replace those water mains, and the roads were in terrible shape. So you'll probably see similar projects like that around the community and other areas where we try to create a situation where if a road is in really bad shape and the water mains are near the end of the life cycle, we'd like to do that at the same time so that in five, ten years, you don't have to go back and dig into a new road in order to replace the water mains. So there's multiple reasons on why it lined up the way that it did. The tree issue, I apologize to many people, that was a problem. It was embarrassing for us at the beginning. The challenge was not only our old historical records, but the historical records for some of the private underground utilities, you know, such as the different fiber companies, the different phone companies, and I think there was even situations where gas lines weren't where records indicated that they were. That shifted the water main from in the front yards of many residential homes out into the roadway so that we could avoid all of those utilities and utility crossings. Tree removals were the first part of that, part of the project. So those, the contractor to do that, the subcontractor to do that, went out, removed those trees, and it wasn't until they actually started digging to install the water main that they discovered that those utilities were not where we thought they were. I know folks say, well, you should have established that first. We would have had to dig in areas that we wouldn't even know that did, you know what I mean, to try to find them. So it's unfortunate it happened. They were trees that are in the right-of-way. Most of the people that I've called, I've talked to, I said, as soon as the project's completed, like this fall, if you're interested in having trees planted back, we're going to do that. Obviously, as you mentioned, we can't put in a forty-foot tall spruce tree, but we'll do what we can to replace the trees that were taken out. So that's something that's still going to happen. Everyone I've talked to, some people are interested in having the trees back, other people are not interested in having the trees back, which is understandable. The one, I did have a conversation with several people about, you know, trees that meant a lot to them for family reasons, and I'm just saying this as a general note, if you're planting a tree in memory of someone or if it has some kind of long-term significance, I wouldn't plant it in the right-of-way. There's, historically, every ten, fifteen, twenty years, there's work that's going to be happening in those right-of-ways, not only from the city of Linden, but from Consumers Energy or the fiber companies or the phone companies. They all have a right to work out in that area, and if there is a tree or landscaping or anything out in that that would impede that work, they have the right to remove that tree. So I just encourage, again, if there is that special attachment to a particular tree, that make sure it's outside of that easement so that these kinds of things don't happen in the future. I did get your photos on the flooding in the yard and the curb entrance. I pointed it out to the engineers and the inspectors. I have not received information back from them on if it's out of spec or inspect. As soon as I do, I'll get back with you, and I also mentioned the flooding to them, and we'll look into that as well and try to make sure if it was caused by the project, that we'll certainly get it resolved. I'll let our engineers talk about why some streets got significantly more curbs than others. The other thing that I will say is, at no point in this project did we expect that we would be replacing all of the curb in that neighborhood. The intent was a curb that was failing, no longer draining properly, you know, heaved. It wasn't an aesthetics thing, it was more a functionality on which curb had to be removed. We did do extra curb because from the time that this project was logged and designed to the time that it was actually implemented, I think close to a year and a half, two years passed. So, you know, a couple more freeze thaw cycles of winter and spring and all that, move them around even more, break even more. So we did add some to the contract that weren't originally in. We did delete some in the contract that was originally intended to be removed. The same thing with driveway approaches. The theory was if the project impacted a drive approach, they would be replaced. When we ended up moving the water main out into the roadway, the project did not affect those drive approaches. So some people that were originally slated to get new drive approaches were no longer impacted by the project. So they did not get new drive approaches. Along Lindenwood, very similar to the tree removal process, when they thought they were taking the water main right down through the yards, they had a company come out and saw cut all of those drive approaches, or many of them, that were going to have to be removed in order to accommodate the insulation of the water main. Because the project impacted those particular driveways, those were replaced because they were cut, and that seemed like the right thing to do for that. I'll push it over to the engineer to talk about the design and any possible solutions.
So I hear everybody being upset with the curbs, and we are looking into it to see what we can possibly do, what needs to be done to potentially straighten it out. The curb that was put in is what is considered a mountable curb. It's a standard M. dot curb that is mountable. I know that the M. dot has a driveway approach that shows the curbs being cut down, and in a lot of cases, those are when you have a six-inch curb. But I am working with some of our construction experts and some of our leadership to see what can we do with those curbs to try to lessen that aggressiveness with them. So we're looking through that right now. As what Don did say, he mentioned about the curbs being replaced. We never intended on replacing all the curbs other than Lindenwood Street itself because Lindenwood was in such bad condition. That was the only way we could fix that road. With the other roads, we were going through and doing spot curb repairs to try to get that taken care of. If we had gone in and replaced every single curb out here, just a quick number that I ran, we'd have been upwards of over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more added to the project to replace every single curb that was out here on these streets. And this is pretty standard, the way we do this, is when you come in and work on a road, a road system, is if you've got curbs that are in decent shape, you try to keep them in place, and you come in and do spot repairs along the curbs. And then one of the main things we look at is more of a functionality standpoint. Are we going to have water flowing through? Are we going to get our longevity from it? That kind of stuff as we're looking through it. Now, I know there was a couple spots that have been missed that we're going to go back and look at trying to get repaired. That should have been fixed. I haven't got all of them, I know just a couple right now that we're looking at, and we're looking at other things that we can do to kind of fix up some of those curbs. So that's pretty much where we're at right now. This project is not done. We are still holding the contractor's feet to the fire. We are in conversations with them daily, trying to get them out there to get work done. As you said, you saw the landscaping were out there today. We're not happy with the restoration at all. We've been on the contractor about getting this taken care of. To the point where I know he called and apologized to Don this afternoon, I was with Don when he called and was apologizing, and it's like, no more apologies, let's just get this done, please. We need to get this completed. We hear your frustrations, and we're doing what we can to try to get things taken care of.
One other thing I'd like to add, again, this is just a general comment. We, our lives, the cities as a project as whole, if we just said, look, everything gets replaced, it would have made our lives a lot easier, it would have made the contractors' work a lot easier, it would make the engineering piece of it a lot easier because they don't have to worry about cutting out sections and working around those sections and preserving them, and then meeting grades and doing all that. But we are trying to be responsible with the taxpayers' money, so we replace what is necessary and reasonable, is sort of the terminology I use. So you'll quite often see, and not just, obviously not just in Linden, but on many projects where you'll see that not all the curb and gutter gets replaced, and it's for the reason Dave was saying, is that because things start getting so expensive, it just becomes cost prohibitive. And so I would have preferred, you know, you guys, many of you wouldn't be here and be upset if everybody got all brand-new white curb, and I understand that. But, you know, on the flip side, again, just trying to be responsible with the taxpayers' money and, you know, be able to do multiple projects. So that's, yeah, I guess I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Don. We're going to start with council questions. Jerry, do you have any questions?
Just one statement I'd like to make. I know it was mentioned that a lot of residents don't want to come forward to the council, and I would strongly advise people to continue to do that. The procedure, the proper procedure is first contact the city hall, right? If the city hall is, if you're not getting the answer you want or you're not getting an answer, then feel free to send an email to the city council, to the mayor, you know, follow the chain of command of procedures. But if you're not getting the answers, because I had a conversation with a resident in your subdivision, and I'm like, have you talked to the city about it? And the answer was that he had not spoken with them yet, that it was a common problem to other people in your subdivision. And I said, well, if we don't know that there's a problem, then we can't fix it. So, you know, and I know some people, the other thing I've heard is, well, they don't want the, you know, like the council or somebody would be after them because they're complaining. I can guarantee that, you know, I could probably speak for everybody on the council that that's not going to be the case. I know, if there's complaints, we want to hear it. Follow the chain of command, go to Ellen, go, and then Ellen would, you know, pass that on to Don. But we do want to hear it because that's the only reason, you know, that's the only reason that I ran this time was because I wanted to make sure that people had more of a voice and that the city was answering that. You might not like the answer that we give, but I will, we will give you an answer. And if we're not giving you an answer, come to the council, to the mayor, and we'll make sure it happens. Thank you, and that's, yeah.
Pam?
I know it's, I really, oh, sorry, turn on the mic. About the trees and everything that got taken down, Don, so are we going to try to replace the trees with the most reasonable type of tree, maybe like, not like, but like, but similar?
So the approach will be, we want to plant what's recognized as a hardy street tree because whatever we put out there, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to thrive and don't become a problem for sewer lines and heaving sidewalks and that sort of thing. So for those interested, what I'll do is I'll provide a list of sort of approved trees that we'll have access to, and the residents would be able to choose what type of tree that they would like. So that's going to be my approach when we get to that point.
Because unfortunately, a lot of the trees, like the blue spruce, are under attack by fungus, Colorado blue spruce blight, and if you drive around the area, notice most of them have died. And so that was a concern too, that they get replaced with a healthy, viable option that's resistant to disease and something you can enjoy for years to come, and also good for street conditions because now with all that heat island effect, you don't want something that can't tolerate that kind of condition. Also, for the contractors, I know you said you're talking with the contractors about the different fixes that we were just talking about, the curbs and whatnot and the yards and whatnot. What's the deadline for them to get back to you?
So it was always intended to be a two-season construction project. It should have wrapped up already, in all honesty. But again, when we go out and we create a punch list, we share that with the contractor, and then again, they have the opportunity to correct those items. We have what's called retainage money, where we hold back a certain amount of money if we're not satisfied with it. And then beyond that, we have, you know, we have performance bonds and different things that we can go after. We're not close to being at that point yet. So, you know, our plan is to work with them through this construction season, try to push them along as quickly as we can, you know, to address things like, you know, trip hazards and that, so people can mow their lawn and those kinds of things, and then we'll work with them to get it to the level that we're satisfied with.
So the point is that they won't be going on and on, months on end, they're actually expected to be back with you before the summer ends?
Sure, yes. Now, doesn't mean that we won't, you know, for example, if the turf quality that they're installing isn't where we want it to be, it doesn't mean that they won't be back this fall or even in the spring because we do have, they do have a year where we can go back to them and say, okay, this still isn't right, you know. But the vast majority of the work should be completed, you know, here this season certainly, with the understanding that they may have to come back, you know, next spring to address one of us.
Okay. And finally, the quality of the soil they're bringing in, are you going to oversee that, make sure it's more of a topsoil type of quality rather than your backfill from a oil or well drinking, which is a lot of clay soils?
Well, yes, I'll tell you. The definition of topsoil is very hard to pin down. We do have a specification in the contract book, and, you know, as far as, does it have weed seeds and that sort of thing in there? That takes a unique analysis to be conducted, you know. We haven't gone there yet. But, you know, it does specify that they're supposed to be using topsoil.
Good quality soil.
Correct.
Yeah, which is a mix of different sand types and, I mean, different soils.
Clay, sand, so clay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Appropriate to the area because sand and soil aren't just, are unique to their locality.
Can be.
Can be.
Thank you. Brad?
As both you and I lived in Lindenwood subdivision, or east in Lindenwood, yes, the original topsoil they brought in, when they brought that in, it's full of glass, rock, and everything else under the sun. Side yards where they lay down equipment is still full of holes and asphalt and sands and peep puddle and all that good stuff. So yeah, the landscaping is not good at all. Four twelve Maple, I think that yard got the most damage of all the yards in the entire project. They came back and they hydroceded the water stop valve and left, you know, four hundred square feet of lawn untouched as dirt. That was recently. So they were not paying attention. Somebody told them, give them a specific task, and they went in there, did the specific task, ignored everything else. I just presented before the meeting, and our engineer, the actual M. dot curb spec for a driveway approach. There is no bump. They're supposed to be cut down to an inch gutter. M. dot detail out for residential curb is basically what we had. Gave it more than a ten percent slope. The problem is we have to figure out where that error is at now and how to fix it. No, I'm not a road guy. Everybody up here we're not road guys. We professionals for that. But, you know, when there's a problem, we do take our time and do our homework and go searching. A standard, a standard M. dot road spec, you know, calls for cuts and threadway. And that's all we've heard through this whole thing, is it's an M-dot spec road, M-dot spec, M-dot spec. So, now we have to figure out what to fix it. And with you guys, I know how aggressive that is. So, don't lose hope. Just give us some time, we'll try to figure something out.
Tom?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Denise?
Well, we're here for our residents. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so normally I don't have to use this thing. We are here for our residents. Anyone that says the city council, the whole year, are not going to listen, that's not going to happen. Maybe in the past, but not now. We're here to listen, and we're here to help. Every one of your concerns need be addressed. You spend a lot of money to have it put in. I understand when they say that it's going to cost a lot more money if every single curb was replaced. And, and the cost that you guys had for your streets, I don't think anybody would want to pay more. We went over and looked, I drove today, Jerry drove today, many of us have driven to watch the whole procedure. I can go back to 2002, when we, Tichner Street, and a whole bunch of other streets got done. It's frustrating of what happens during the whole process. We had dust, we had our curbs not right, we had gutters going down. And I asked Don, I said, when is the, when is the end for this contract? And he said, November 25. Doesn't mean the end, but the contractors, he's holding their, he threw his feet to the fire. I went over today when they were putting seed down, I think it was on Maple, I'm not sure. I know it's east. And I actually asked what kind of seed they were putting down, and they said it was blue spruce, no.
Bluegrass.
Bluegrass.
They told me that they didn't know what kind it was. I asked them the same question.
Today?
Yes.
Okay, today. I did ask the main guy that was there.
They had it squinted down, had no idea.
Oh, he might, no, I talked to the foreman, I think. But, we understand, we do. And I'm glad everyone's situation be fixed. Don has committed to making sure that, you know, you guys are all being heard. Give them the two weeks, he's working with the contractors. The man from Row, I always forget his name. He's a, he's the engineer, too. So, give us a little bit more time. I, pond in your yard, you shouldn't have, you know? And I can tell you with Tichner Street, even today, if something's going on on our street, we still have people going, Linden comes down and fixes holes and stuffs like that, and continue to fix it. And it doesn't cost me for them to do the maintenance on their roads. So, I believe they'll come in with a solution for all of you. Just give them a little bit more time, a little bit more grace. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Brad?
So, the items tonight that were brought up by our residents, are they on your punch list, which is a to-do list? So, just so you guys know, because I heard the punch list, and I'm like, what's that? But, it's like a big to-do list. So, the items that we've talked about tonight, those items are already on, or will be added? And you're going to review these?
Yes, I don't think I heard anything new tonight. The, and typically what happens is, if I get an email, it does go on the punch list. But, I also share that email directly with the engineers, the inspectors, and the contractor.
Wonderful.
And so, when I, when I get mine, I forward it to them and say, here's another one that needs to be looked into. And so, that's my process.
Okay, good. So, you update them real time, which, that's amazing, I like that. So, we, so we talked about when the project is supposed to end, and we know that they do have a year to complete everything, and come back if there's something that's not done correctly. And that's fine. But what about the trees? That would be on us, that would be on Linden, to take care of that. So, do you look at that and think that that's where it's happening, in the fall, when it's natural tree planting?
That's my goal, is to do it in the fall. I would want to do it this time of year.
Right, yes, I agree. Okay, I think all of the other counselors covered the rest of my questions, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor? Go ahead. I'll just want you to just... Thank you, yeah, okay. All right. So, when you get the update, Don and Dave, on the curving, the driveways, all of that information that you said that you're waiting to find out, and now with the new piece from Brad, will you be putting that out as Lindenwood update 1,529?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we know, again, we need to, the contractor is also a partner in this, so we need to work with them on the resolutions as well. But as soon as I know what those solutions look like, then I can certainly share it with the group. It becomes the responsibility of the contractors. So, for example, if they determine they're going to work on individuals' driveways, we don't dictate what order they do it, any of that. That's, that's the contractor's responsibility. So, they will need to communicate directly with each resident on, okay, if we're doing something in front of your driveway that would limit access, we're doing it this day. That becomes their responsibility.
All right, and then, I want to echo Jerry on what he had said about us hearing you. And everybody has said it, but we do, we do, and we do want, we want you to email, we want you to go through, like Jerry said, the chain, but then email us if you're feeling like, you know, okay, we've done this, and I'm not getting an answer, answer I like. And then I'm going to also go back through that chain as well, and every other council member. But at least then we know. Because unless, if somebody doesn't bring it to us, a lot of times, we don't even know what's going on. There was a social media post that was put out, and when the social media post was put out, I read South Street. And I actually appreciate that resident, we're posting that out there. Because I got in my car the very next day and I started driving. I had already been up and down, but it reminded me, hey, go back and look again. Now, that, now that you're at this progress point. And I snapped photos, and I have given those photos, well, I'm going to give the photos, I've given numbers to Don, which he, we met about today, and thank you guys for that meeting. And I'm going to be giving photos. Then, the chipping asphalt that she had photos of, Don, do you want to explain? Did you see those photos? And do you want to explain?
So, it looks to me, it looks like it's over the gutter, so that, that would fracture off.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, but then, exactly what Don says, it looks like it's asphalt that was on the gutter, and that's what's fracturing off. It's not the asphalt itself, it's just because it's a very thin layer that's on the concrete that's fracturing. But I'll have our inspector go out there, take a look at it, make sure that's what it is.
So, it's not bonded to the gutter? Trying to think, it's like if something squeezes out over top of something that's harder, it's not intended to stick there. So, if cars drive on it, they will fracture that piece off. Doesn't affect the integrity of the, of the connection to the gutter there.
And then the next question that I have, numerous people ask me about, and you brought it up today, and it was brought up up here as well, glass and rock, washers, all sorts of things in the topsoil. Is there a way, and I don't know this, but is there a way to remediate that while also doing the grading of the yard? Because you don't want, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want glass in my yard. You have dogs, children, interrupting.
Yeah. If you come across something like that, reach out to us, because I want to, I would want to point to a specific location. The topsoil screening process, it's certainly not perfect. If a wise guy throws a piece of glass in there, it just gets fractured in as part of the aggregate of the, of the topsoil. So, if you have something specific like that, let me know, and we'll point it out and try to force them to go out and identify where those areas are and remove it.
And to finish off, I did write down every concern that everyone had stated. So, I will be staying on top of these, as I'm sure every council member will be. I do appreciate every one of y'all coming out today, and all the ones that are going to be watching the multiple videos. I appreciate that. Please, you know, you can find our email addresses, Don's is online, ours is also on the city website. And feel free to reach out if needed. And Jerry, you had one more?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on what Denise was saying, because we spoke to the landscape guys today. We did confirm that the type of seed that they're using, because some seeds you only plant spring and fall, they won't do well in the summertime. This is a seed that is any time of year, and I'm like, but what about, do they have to water it? And he says, according to this, this type of seed, they shouldn't have to, but it obviously would help if you water the areas that they seed. But, just did want to, just kind of add to that to confirm that, you know, you're putting stuff in the middle of summer, is it full summer?
Have you provided our water bill for watering?
No.
There you go.
So, the information that Brad gave, guys, maybe you have an idea in sixty days about new driveway planning, is there a timeline at all, or is it just November? And they're hoping to come today, here's a plan, we figured out how our big star driveway may be graded at ten percent, is there any idea of a timeframe, or hopefully have a plan for that?
I'm trying to get it resolved as soon as I can. And when I say as soon as I can, within the next week to two weeks at the most.
And, you, ma'am, thank you. One more question, Don, because I didn't realize it was bluegrass seed. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to put out a multi-use, multipurpose seed that's sunshade and multiple soil types, in order to get the best lively lawn?
It would be, and I just wrote it note down here.
Because bluegrass is specific, and it would, in multi-purpose, would do much better.
I would not be surprised if bluegrass is the primary component. Typically, in these, in these seed mixes, there is, there is a mix. I would want to look at the label and see exactly what's in there. Normally, bluegrass is the higher, highest percentage, because in most applications, it likes sun, so are most applications, it likes sun on the road edge, so.
Right, I just want to make sure, because of, you know, since they are on the road edge, you know, make sure it can endure the heat and the other things that you, conditions that you get on the road edge. Because those are the hardest areas to grow grass. I want to make sure it's hardy. Thank you.
Are there any other residents who have other questions?
I'd like to make one suggestion. Here's your favor again. It would be possible to put out, say, a punch list letter for each of the residents in the project, and have them, because, like I said, a lot of people, they'll, they have problems, they're not coming down here to talk because they don't feel, they don't feel that they're going to get a result, and it's going to be, if we sent a letter out to each member of the project to the punch list, and say, are you satisfied with your right-of-way work up to this point? And if not, please don't, and drop in the drop box downtown with their comments, so they could write. Now, you'll have a list of people that are still not happy with it, and something that Don can work with. Because if you, if you don't know about, they're not, they're dissatisfied, you can't do anything to help. So, there might be of these people that are here, there's probably this many more that are unhappy, but they're not voicing that. So, by providing a letter to each resident in the project with a punch list to say, are you, are you happy? If you're not happy, what are you not happy with? Is something like that be done?
Done.
That's a council decision.
And then, can I just make one comment, if you don't mind? On the city side, there is a project update, and I think it says, Thursday 17, it's like the 17th, yep, 17th update.
Let me catch up again. People don't feel, because they're feeling, is that true, that the city is going to do anything? So, they're having to go, they have to go.
Well, we can't do the back-up form, I'm really sorry.
So, the reason I'm making my comment is based on his comment, that maybe there should be a little more need put into this update. Like, we could say, here's the, here's, here are the major items, and this is where we are on them. Or, here's the result of...
And if I'm understanding, he's also kind of asking for a comments section, maybe where some things that people can drop in, you know, with whether or not they're pleased. I think that there's that portion, so, as well. So, is that something we can, do we want to bring that to the next meeting? I would like to see that on the next agenda.
Yes, I just want everybody to be aware that the update is out here, and we have a format for, you know, communicating with everybody.
Yes, thank you. So, Kristen, can we get that on the next agenda, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to council or comment procedures. Kristen?
So, my understanding is this discussion item originated by the mayor, and it's communicated through Ellen, requesting if there was something that could be done to address councilors speaking over one another. In discussion with Ellen, and also after re-reviewing our council rules and procedure, I do believe our current rules do speak to this in more than one section, as highlighted within the packet. If I may share my perspective, I do not see the need to duplicate. Respectfully, I believe each councilor needs to and can be respectful of one another's time to speak. I know we all get eager to share our thoughts on a topic or in reply to a statement, but as the rules state, the presiding officer, being the mayor, is responsible for chairing the meeting and enforcing these rules and keeping order. I see this similar to our public comment procedure, in that the mayor should call on councilors individually to speak, and may perhaps rotate the order at times, until everyone has had a turn. So, I just wanted to bring this up for council to discuss, and if necessary, I will work on language to add to the current rules and procedures and amendments once more.
Brad?
I think you, like, we went around, everybody gets turned, so that's what's said, is if there's any, you come back, you don't jump on everybody else's comments, and we'll be fine. And we can't go back and forth with our residents. Once we've closed the discussion, unless the mayor opens it back up to residents, which he did tonight. But again, we don't go back and forth, we keep it up here, we cordial with each other, and wait our turn, we'll be fine.
Tom?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we just don't have to, with the learning curve, and we don't have to comply with the public and with us, and it'll, it'll work out.
Denise?
I think that sometimes we just stay a little boisterous, and I think we just need to take a breath, and we'll be fine. We don't need to add anything else to our rules.
Tonight's meeting has proven to me that everybody has read through this agenda. I just love it. So, I like how the meeting went tonight, and I know that you're still getting used to saying, oh, wait a minute, hold on, like, you know, I saw you do it with Jerry. And I'm really careful of that, too, to ask permission. So, but feel free with any of us, just so that you know, hey, if you tell me, wait, wait until, you know, it's your turn for a comment, or I'll get back with you, that, that's fine. You don't have to feel any type of reservation about doing that. That, according to item number eight, that's exactly what it says. You're allowed to do, and that's part of the process. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, I don't think any changes need to be made, we just make, need to make sure that we follow the procedures, and that the procedures are clear to the residents if they don't know. Just follow what we have, and we'll be fine.
And if Jerry doesn't follow them, I'll just, Ellen will be really good. Sorry, Jerry. No, I agree with everybody, is that, you know, we just need to give due respect to everybody, and let Madam Mayor lead the meeting, and give us our guesses for our comments. Oh, I'm sorry, my mic isn't even on.
Madam Mayor, can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
I didn't want to speak at a turn, but I think it's really a good practice to sometimes bring these, this information and these processes, so that we can review them. I mean, this was a good read. I went through it, I read it, went, oh, ooh, did I do that? I need to, you know what I'm saying? Like, I need to be more careful, you know, when I try to keep myself in order, too, so. Every once in a while, it's nice to be reminded.
Very good, all right. Well, I think that, I really don't have anything to add. I brought it up so that that may, because my, my main goal... Oh, because my, my main goal as the new mayor is bringing, you know, making sure everyone feels respected and heard. Whether that's residents or council members. And then nobody talks over anyone and no one talks over residents. And so it's all right there in the rules of procedures and I think we're good to go. Thank you. All right. And Kristen, now I chuck the softball at you of the receipt of anonymous public comments.
All right. So this agenda item arises after a few recent instances in which a resident has submitted written comments with the wish of such comments himself to remain anonymous. To recap, it was requested by Brad and that Ellen and I verified with Attorney Gildner if a resident can request to remain anonymous or request a letter to be addressed to a public body to remain anonymous. Gildner advised and also suggested a policy. Brad also suggested that as well. And I can turn it over to him to explain shortly, as well as council's poll. Ultimately, if our attorney thinks this necessary or sufficient, I believe the solution may be to just add language within our rules of procedure. Maybe within the public comment section to address intake of the comments, distribution of such anonymous comments and overall just how we want to handle them. And I can, after discussion, of course, I'd be more than willing to work with Gildner on language, bearing in mind Oma, Foya and others to have for a review at a future meeting.
Kristen? Turn it over. Do I have anything to add?
Um, we can't dictate whether someone submits something anonymously or not. We can have a policy that says that they can't. But if they come in and hand you something or mail something in that's anonymous, it is what it is. I think that you can make clear though, that the city will not act on any anonymous complaints. I don't think that just because a complaint that comes in is anonymous and is directed or the, the request or ask that it be given to a city council means that it should be given to city council, any more than a non-anonymous complaint is. It should be handled as any complaint is ordinarily handled. But in my experience, persons who are not prepared to put their name to a complaint, something that they want done, I'll just say it, I don't think it's, it's worth very much. Oftentimes, if it is concerning a neighbor, for example, the city, in order to take any sort of enforcement action, usually needs some evidence in support of whatever it is that the person's complaining about. And who better to provide that than the people who live next door and may be able to see it? And yet if it's anonymous, they're depriving us of the necessary people to make that go. So I wouldn't recommend that you really adopt a, a, a real formal process. I think it just should be made clear, you can turn in whatever you want to turn in, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the city will act on it.
Thank you.
I would have to agree that if you can't, because we're talking about the anonymous, right? I'd have to agree with it, if you can't, we can acknowledge it, learn from it, that we can't do anything about it. Because we don't, there's nothing to, to make it rock solid. Make it, that we can stand out of this robot.
Denise?
Um, I believe what Attorney Gildner said. I don't think that, you know, it could be gossip in an anonymous letter. And that they want us to act on something, we really can't. So I agree with what Mike is saying. I'm leaving it at that.
I'm in agreement.
Jerry?
This is Mike's ball field. You'll play on it.
Ooh. That was good, Jerry. Yeah, it was.
Pam?
I agree with everybody, especially, you know, Mike knows what he's talking about and I always think err on the side of Mike. I like Mike and just in case. But I, I think, you know, it's good to, sorry, Mike. It's good, it's good to acknowledge the complaint and then just, we can't do anything on it. Move on.
Brad?
Because complaints anonymous with nature of, nature of Mark, I asked the attorney to review this because we were being, received letters anonymously. They were requesting city councils take action for an entire subdivision. But yeah, we don't know who sent the letter. But they were requesting an action taken. And, you know, it's, with my opinion that, you know, we can't act on an anonymous complaint. I mean, obviously it goes, you know, send it anonymously that, you know, somebody's burning down houses or things like that, that's one thing. But anonymous complaint to, you know, we need, we need to shut the water off on, on Lyndonwood Street tomorrow. We don't know why. We don't know who to ask why. We don't, don't know anything. We just don't know the details. That's why I, we just need a policy that will accept anonymous correspondence, but no action taken unless there's a name on it.
So, I'm going to ask you, Brad. I didn't get that. Actually, we don't know.
I, no, he said, he said the same thing. He said differently.
Okay, very good. So you do not want that added to the-
Well, we, yeah, I do want it added.
You do want it added.
That we're not going to-
Okay. Can you add that to the next decision?
Yeah, so added as part of the rules of procedure or as separate?
Part of the rules of procedure, I would think, right Mike?
I think that, that, that suffices. And again, I think it's important, Kristen, over the last year, just estimating how many anonymous complaints have, have the city received?
Just three.
Three, and they're all submitted by the same individual, at least as far as you know. So we're not talking about a pandemic here. I mean, this is a, this is, you know, I, I don't think you take a, a bludgeon here to, to fix this problem.
Madam Mayor, real quick.
Yes.
We can reassert, this was not Lyndon Wood.
Thank you.
No, not at all.
How do you know that?
I believe after three of them, I know.
All right. And does any resident have any questions on this item?
I can come in.
Yes.
If you're not man enough or woman enough, put your name to it and shut off.
If I walk up to this podium and I say my name's anonymous and I want to say blah, 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 you're going to go, well, we can't take it seriously because we don't know who you are. It's the same thing as the letter.
It's like anonymous comments online.
All right. So now we're going to move on to the manager's update, divided by Kristen.
So I will read through it, but everyone should have received it this afternoon. We have email, Ellen sent it out. Anyone who has any questions, we can try to address.
All right. Pam, you'll start with you?
Um, there was so much, there was so much on that update that it's like, what, fourteen items there? And I only had a, I only had a couple of questions there about the Vans customer service up, update of training, I'm sorry, training. At what percentage of the people talking to you have been, have become more aggressive? I mean, because you said you had to take this training. Or it is a good thing, it's a good thing just to work with regular people. It's a reminder of how, you know, how to work with people and that's a good thing. But what percentage of the people coming in now are like aggressive?
Um, it's kind of hard to get a figure. And it's, it's up and down. It comes in waves. It's not like it's everyone, every day. It's the deputies up front and most of it pertains to water bills. So it's understandable with the changes. So it was just a good thing to take for, to help us with potential de-escalation techniques. And I'm just part of our professional development, so. Got a lot from it.
Okay, and then the, the manager's session for, for us. What is going to be your main focus for now?
So I will have to defer to Ellen.
Okay, okay. You're always supposed to, you know, it's always nice to know what you're getting into. That's it.
Jerry?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Right then. Um, about the manager's update. Any questions?
Yeah, no, I, I read through that. That was very good. Thank you. I had the same question that Pam had because I thought we'd gone through objectives. And I thought that that's what her, that training with Lou was for. But, I mean, obviously there's something else we need, I assume. So do you know anything about that, Madam Mayor?
I'm just, I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to defer.
Defer to Ellen, okay.
At this point in time, yes.
Okay.
Ellen's, I think, states she received feedback from, assuming most of you should have provided her some sort of feedback and that's what she shared with you.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I thoroughly enjoyed getting that update. And to me, it was bulletproof points of what's going on in the city, things that are coming. I was excited when I seen it because it addressed a lot of issues we had. So I thank Ellen on the three different cameras. While she's on vacation. But again, thank her because, you know, she really took the time to make us all aware of what's going on.
I think it was a good thing. Looking forward to it. So thumbs up to her.
Brad?
Best part about it is we have two new businesses coming to town.
Woo!
That's great.
We have designs in the company cozy location and Hounds, Hounds Tooth and Heroin Plant resale shop by the Presley's same shop.
Good stuff. There was a portion in there about the dam. And I contacted our drainage commissioner last Friday. And I just, I kind of want to give him the public thank you. Because it was Friday, four thirty, he still answered the phone. Because I had been getting a lot of phone calls in regards with our dam. And he has assured me of, you know, everything is, is, you know, manually right now working. They can totally see the water, you know, levels from where they are at all times. And the piece has come in to fix the dam. And so at this point, they're just waiting for it to be programmed. That's what he had said to me. But everything is in excellent shape in Lyndon, according to, you know, Jeff Wright. So, and I appreciate, I, I do appreciate that, him taking that time. So, and I also appreciate Ellen writing, it was a great, great update. All right. And so with that, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. We appreciate you guys coming out and speaking and telling us what's on your mind this evening and spending Monday night with us. So at seven thirty, this meeting is adjourned.